Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call to order the July 8th, 2024 school committee meeting. And at this time, I'd ask everyone to rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just.
Next up is introduction of members.
Tenovio Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Joe Spagno, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pilli Galarani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
All right, consent agenda A warrants. Take a motion to approve the warrants?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes for June 13th, 2024.
So moved.
Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May you oppose, the ayes have it. Moving on to public forum, would anybody like to come and address the school committee? Seeing no one, we'll move on. I'm going to ask the school committee to, I'll accept the motion to take the agenda out of order to go to the, report to the superintendent, item A, introduction of athletic director and student life.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for taking the item out of order so Darlene won't have to sit through lots of riveting conversation, no doubt. Darlene, if you want to come to the table up front, that'd be great. I'm very pleased to be introducing, reintroducing to two of you, or three of you, actually, and then introducing to the rest of our school committee, if you want to sit, Ms. Darlene Goddett, who is our new athletic and student life director, our first athletic and student life director. We are thrilled to have Darlene joining the team. In your packets is a pretty extensive overview of Darlene's education, her resume, but I would actually pose more important than those things, and those things are very, very important, is some of the different ways that Darlene's been thinking about and sharing as early on with the search committee about how she would enter into this position. Looking at a 30-day, 60-day, 90-day plan, she and I were just talking about her first five days, what that plan's going to look like next week when she starts Monday, the 15th, but also going through some sample coach evaluations and how she wants to help kind of reframe and tighten up the coaching selection and evaluation and feedback process. And so we're thrilled, Darlene, to have you here. Darlene is coming to us as, just wrapping up her tenure in Randolph as the assistant athletic director. Their school system's about twice the size as ours, so she has some experience with the larger systems and multiple teams within one sport, but also some similar challenges, too, in terms of how to build out and expand and build a bench. And so Darlene, we're really excited that you're here this evening and you wanted to share a few words with the school committee, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm super grateful for the opportunity and excited to meet all of you and build relationships within the school. Yeah, I'm just grateful for the opportunity and to start this new role with Blackstone Millville.
Awesome. And it sounds like Carrie will be in touch with you soon.
We'll be digging into those uniform closets and trying to get a fundraiser going.
Sounds good.
So just wanted to take a moment and introduce the school committee to our newest member of our leadership team.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Darlene.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking that out of order.
No trouble. Okay, back to school committee. Item A is Millville Elementary School water update, and we have the town administrator from the town of Millville, Mr. Caruso. Feel free to step up to the hot seat, as they say.
The hot seat, yeah. It's all right, you have air conditioning. I do have materials if you want to.
Absolutely.
Just to reference, it's materials you've all seen before. Just will test those around and I'll get on the other side because I'll just reference. All this material is on the town's website. We have a pretty, you know, thick section on the website of MES water. But basically, just to reference it, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here, give you an update, you know, the lead sheet just talks about, it's on one of our PDFs that's on the website, just talks about the general testing of the various bad things in the water always comes up good. So that's on your lead sheet. You know, you don't have trouble with bacteria or microorganisms, lead and copper. We do have halooacetic acids, that's what we're here to talk about, but most of the bad stuff you really don't have a problem with. Second page is just a brief overview that you've seen before of how the system works, right? And we have a green sand filter that is there to filter out the manganese and the iron. You have very hard water up there, as you know, one would describe it. And the manganese and iron causes, you know, discoloration. We've seen that, I think, back in January, February, when one of the parts of the system failed and it was replaced quickly by the, one of the former operators. So, you know, we, we filter it out in a bag filter, get rid of sediment, we put the chlorine in, that's where the magic happens, and that's what we're talking about, to the green sand filter, and that helps bring out the iron and manganese. The good water goes into the large storage tank outside of the school, right outside there, then comes into a pressure tank, there's some UV disinfection, that's where the water's disinfected from ultraviolet light, it's not the chlorine. And then there's what's called corrosion control to keep the pH level, the acidity or alkalinity in a certain level, and gets rid of also, helps prevent lead and other copper from getting through. And then your finished water goes to the building. And so in that system, in the green sand, the chlorine, we have remote monitoring of the chlorine levels, okay? We're not, we don't have remote operation, the capability is there for what's been put in, but Mass DEP doesn't want us to do that, but we do have remote monitoring, and that's helped, that went in back in, you know, October of last year, and Dr. Gulick was watching it constantly, and now the new operator keeps the tabs on the chlorine levels, and that's key to the whole thing here that we're talking about. And the corrosion control, we just put in three little updated pumps that help manage that process so that the pumps are up to date and the right levels are going in. There was some, you know, challenge, I guess, of pH levels and so forth. On the next page I put forth is the summary since June of '23, just shows you the iron and manganese, which is what, the whole purpose of what the things are all about with the chlorine, and highlighted are some of the levels that exceed, they call it an MCL, but it's really an SMCL. It's, it's not a requirement that we have to follow, we don't issue notices if it exceeds it, but nonetheless, you want to track that, both in the green sand filters, there's two filters of green sand, and you want to track it in the finished water. And you can see in the finished water for the iron, everything was fine under DEP's SMCLs. And in the finished water and the manganese, back in April, there was a, exceeded the .05, it went to .075, otherwise it's historically been well under that. Doesn't mean anything, but probably at that point, there might have been some discoloration in the water, I don't know. But in any event, that helps direct what the amount of chlorine is required to pull that stuff out of the water. And so on the next page here, you see the actual results going back to January of '23. For halooacetic acids in the left column, which has a maximum contaminant level of 60 parts per billion, and on the total trihalomethanes, 80 parts per billion is their MCL. And you recall, last time, I think, I was here, one of the times recently that I was here, I talked about the event, if you will, back in, you know, January, February, when the prior operator was not sufficiently providing chlorine, which caused the green sand filter to fail, had to be replaced, in the replacement of it, had to be jump-started, which means it required either one of two chemicals, they used chlorine to jump-start it, and that caused a fair amount of breakthrough of the disinfection byproducts. And because the notices and the, and the compliance that Mass DEP, as you may recall, is based on rolling annual quarterly averages, I think that's the best way I would describe it, okay? And so if you have a big peak like we saw back in January, February, March, that can mess you up even though you, that can mess you up on compliance, thus notices have to go out. And we saw that because notices had to go out right through the fourth quarter of calendar year '23. We've been all clear, both on the averaging and therefore in compliance, for the first two quarters now, so for all of calendar '24. And in your packet, on the third page, you see a letter from Mary Jude Pigsley, who's been here a couple of times now in front of you, where she has committed to, if the third quarter comes in, in compliance, and we'll probably know that mid-September, based on the timing of testing, she will lift the bottled water requirement. And I would remind you that Millville is the only community in Massachusetts having disinfection byproduct challenges that's required to provide bottled water. No other community, in fact, the community I live in has DBP issues, I get notices, but I don't get bottled water provided. Separately, I'll say that the Board of Selectmen at their last meeting voted to provide bottled water through the end of calendar year '24, and through the end of the school year, if requested, provided students were in the building. So that's even if the DEP lifts the requirement. So hopefully, your decisions in terms of which facilities you're using are not based on a water issue, because we think we've covered that both in terms of meeting compliance and our continuation of diligence on the operator's part in terms of managing the chlorine levels and the treatment system, and plus the fact that the town would provide the bottled water for drinking and cooking. And lastly, on the last two pages, which is also on the website, is just, you know, a notice that the Board of Selectmen have put up for the public and would request, and I think the request would come in to you, through you, Dan, or you all, to provide this notice, subject any edits you may have to it, to your school population. And that I would define as parents, staff, students. We don't have that distribution list, but it's up on the website of Millville. So that's where we're at. I don't know what else there is to bring you up to speed on. On the long-term play, you know, our operator engineers working closely for us, with us, but more importantly, with Mass DEP in terms of how we tap into the million dollars that have been set aside through the Mass DEP grant that's available to make best use of that. So whether it's to, it's for engineering and it's for something else. And the engineering may or may not include the tapping into the Uxbridge water line, we have what we call a Plan B, which is to enhance the treatment system, because the long-term play on that money is for dealing with PFAS compliance in the future. That's a few years out, the regulations have been issued now, they are four parts per trillion, and I think if you recall, Mary Jude even used the example of, you know, an Olympic-sized swimming pool full of sand, and it would be four grains of sand. That's what you're dealing with in the compliance level. We, we test it every month, and we've been running between eight and 12 parts per trillion, which is current compliance for Mass DEP, which is 20 parts per trillion, but that won't get us to the finish line when we're required to comply with it in the future. And I will say that I don't know how folks are actually going to comply with it, because even sampling is going to be challenging. You, you know, you can't wear makeup, you can't have perfume or hairspray or, you know, clothes that have been used to dry a sheet in it, because it could contaminate the sample to the tune of four parts per trillion. So I think it's, there will be some interesting consequences of the regulation and the need to comply with it, and a lot of water systems are going to face the challenge. We think with our engineer that there are a couple of ways to deal with it. One, of course, is put the burden on in Uxbridge, if we tap into that, they will have the challenge. Won't mean that they'll comply, but they will have the challenge, and their source of water is not too dissimilar than our source of water. There are localized add-ons to the treatment system we have that could probably address this PFAS problem. So that's what the engineering grant money will help determine, it's like your feasibility study on your facilities. We have to evaluate what the best, best path would be for MES water, currently to deal with DBPs, but more importantly, PFAS, when they're not too dissimilar. Welcome, any questions, thoughts, comments?
I'll just start off, so the request is to share our, like, our list of getting this letter out?
Yes.
All right, so I'll just defer that to the, you and the superintendent.
Okay.
At a later, yeah, at a later. That's more of an administrative, I think, thing at this point. Anybody, any, anybody have any questions for Peter as far as water situation?
I just have a question. So it's going to be monitored remotely, but it's not going to be automated?
We don't operate it remotely, that's correct. So if we saw a problem remotely, someone would have to physically be present to twist the dial, if you will.
Gotcha.
Kind of like an alarm type of, if it's...
It is kind of like, that's correct.
I think Blackstone does, under our current system right now, has...
You mentioned that Mass DEP doesn't allow...
They don't want us to remotely manage it, that's correct.
Anybody or just nobody?
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but certainly not us.
All right.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Blackstone's similar. Alarms will, the superintendent will get the alarm, the DPT, the water guys, and then they have to go and physically adjust.
I know you are all experts on water, far more than you ever wanted to be, I know I am.
And so I, just to let the rest of the committee know, I met with Peter and Jenna a couple of times on this matter, and they've given me updates, and they have come a distance from last year, and I appreciate the hard work and, and the town meeting vote to fund the progress and continue to fund the progress. And, and so any other further questions or anyone? And would you like to add anything to?
No, I, you know, I mean, you know that the town would love for you to get back into MES.
Yeah.
But you're on a three-school plan, and I know what your vote has been, but I'm just, you know, the Board of Selectmen certainly would like you to be in there. That was the, you know, the caveat of the providing bottled water, even if it's lifted, is the caveat is that you have the students back in MES. But that's your call.
Yeah. And I believe the goal of the committee is the same, is to get those, those students back in there. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, it's my pleasure, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
All right, moving on. Next on the agenda, MSBA update. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, so we are thrilled to be sharing that we did receive approval from the Mass School Building Authority on our request for services for the owner's project manager. We have posted, if you looked at the call on Saturday, the one second call, you would see our, our request for services in there. And Joe posted in the central register, so on Wednesday, the requests will go out in the central register for an owner's project manager. So we are super thrilled. We will be reconvening the owner's project manager subcommittee of the School Building Committee once the packets start coming in, and starting to go through the screening process and the interview process, and bring all of that in front of the School Building Committee in order to move this process forward. We have to have an update to the Mass School Building Authority by the end of July regarding the number of applicants that we had, and then we have to have our selection made to submit to the Mass School Building Authority by August 14th, in order to make the September 9th MSBA owner's project manager approval panel. So there's a lot of pieces to this, as you, as you know. So we're in a great place. This is the earliest we could submit, we got everything done, everything on time. The request for services looks very, very good, it's very clear, it's very thorough. There's a nice summary about our two great towns, about the school district, about what we're looking for, and so all systems are a-go. So we'll keep the committee posted. And actually, by our next meeting, I think our next meeting is the 19th, yep, the 19th of August, we will have submitted our selection to the Mass School Building Authority and await their approval at their September 9th meeting. So lots of work to do between now and then for the, particularly the subcommittee of the School Building Committee for the OPM selection, but we're well on our way. So great update.
Thank you very much. Athletic and use facility fees.
Yes, so the school committee at our last meeting, I think Carrie, I think you had made the request to take a look at our user fees for both athletics and for our building use, and I'm going to have Joe explain all of this. There are three handouts in your packet that pertain to this topic. One is a user fee, oh, four, rather, my apologies, one is a user fee overview for athletics, and then three are related to the building or facilities use fees. What those three documents are for the facilities use is, one, that's like a T-chart, it shows what we currently charge, and then what we're recommending we charge moving forward. The other is the actual policy where all of these fees live, I think it's policy KF. So you can see, we didn't touch any of the language, but we did update the numbers should the committee decide they want to approve the updated facility use schedule. And then the third is where our current fees stack up against our neighboring communities. So there's a ton of information there, and Joe, I know you'll walk everybody through.
I want to start with the comparison chart, which is this one here, where it shows what our current fee structure is for use of facilities. And Stephanie was a big help in this and gathering some of this together for the four different surrounding districts. We looked at Uxbridge, Mendon, Upton, Bellingham, and Douglas. And if you look at that, you can see the most blaring item on here is that we charge a flat daily fee. For example, if you look at Group One, Auditorium for Group Two, rather, it's $50 a day is what we charge. Several, a couple of the other districts charge a set amount for the first three hours of the day, and then any time above that, they charge an additional hourly rate. Uxbridge will charge up, you know, $150 an hour for their facilities. And Bellingham, looks like they use a structure, depending on the number of hours they're going to use, between $50 and $150 an hour. So, you know, if you look at each line, you'll see the same kind of thing applies to each one of these other districts. So we are pretty low. We're not even competitive, really, that's probably, might be why we get so many requests for use of facilities. But I don't, I think we can stand to do some adjusting to this. If you look at the T-chart that the superintendent mentioned, which is this one here, this shows you the current fee structure that we have now in the various groups, and what we're proposing that our fee structure be changed to. Group One, obviously, which is the community programs and things, there's no fee charged for those programs. Group Two, I'm going to just use Auditorium as the example to kind of look at. Right now, we do $50 a day, we're recommending to go up to $60 for the first three hours. And then hours above and beyond that, four hours and up, if you go to the bottom on the right side, it says additional fees per hour, Group Two would pay an additional $20 per hour after the first three hours. And the same thing applies for Group Three with the Auditorium. So in, in Group Two, it's just a $10 increase than the hourly requirements of three hours. Group Three is more of the business owners and non-community private facilities that would come in and rent. We're doing a slight adjustment on the hour, on the rate, and it's actually based on the three hours again, and then any hours above the three would be an additional $40 or $30 an hour, depending on what facility that they're looking to, to use. I don't have much more detail beyond that. Again, like the superintendent said, the policy is here in front of you, no language changes, just that route, that fee structure has changed. But if there are any questions, I can try to answer for you, I'd be happy to. Well, one thing I did want to note, too, the new structure, we are not the highest to be paid, but we're also not the lowest. I think we're pretty much right in the middle, and it makes us very competitive. We probably should still see a lot of use of our facilities, even with the new rate structure.
Does the, does the rate include a custodian?
The custodians included if they're, if they're already on staff working that day. We'll charge additional custodial fees for holidays or weekends.
Joe, when you, when you, on the, on the proposed fee schedule, let's just go at the top, Auditorium, $60, is that a minimum of three hours or four three hours?
It's going to be $60 for three hours.
Four three hours.
$60 an hour for three hours. Whether they use it less than that, that's fine, it's still the $60 charge.
The big, as you know, because you see every time one comes in, the big ones that are not our, like, our community are a lot of the dance companies that, you know, want the Auditorium for the weekend. They do their, you know, their recitals at various times during the year, and that tends to be some of the bigger private groups that will, you know, it's, it's quite a good deal they get for coming for, you know, two or three days sometimes. I think we had one over Memorial Day weekend, if I remember correctly this year, and all of the fees that come along with, you know, the custodians, they're happy to pay because the rental charges is quite less than what's around us.
And we would still be, it seems like, one of the few that include the custodian fee in it. Looks like the others have additional fees. I knew we were low, but seeing it out...
Not that low, right? I was surprised myself.
Some even charge energy fees, so I'm not really sure exactly what that was, but...
Utilities, probably.
Yeah.
In addition to their rental fee?
Yeah, if you look at the, the first sheet that Joe sent out, I think, if you look under, for example, Uxbridge and Douglas, it says additional fees under Uxbridge.
And energy fees, yeah.
Yes, and utilities, same thing with, I think Douglas was there, and Mendon, Upton. But I don't think you, we were proposing that.
No, no, we were going to keep the structure basically the same, except for the hourly rates.
Hi. In regards to custodial fees, during regular shift hours, there is dance companies that come in and request use non-man lift, and we need to have an extra custodian on duty at that time to operate that man lift.
So that'd be an additional cost to what we normally...
Correct.
Then I think, I think it would be right to bill for that, additional cost.
Yeah, and I think we do.
We do, but I just was making sure it was included in this.
Yep. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
That's in some fine print there that, yeah, we reserve the right to charge. I thought I saw, I read it somewhere.
Yeah, maybe add that to the, to the policy somewhere?
No, I thought I saw it.
I think it is in there somewhere.
Yeah, if we can maybe just add that in there, that we...
Yeah.
I know, I've read that, too, Dan. I'm wondering if it's on that form. Yeah, it's somewhere on one of these.
Jason, I'm sorry, I just want some clarification on something. So a group like Bimble, like Blackstone Millville Youth Basketball, but it's not the school, so they fall under Group Two, right?
Yes.
So, they tip, I'm just throwing this out there. They typically, because we're changing from a daily to an hourly, they typically use that gym for multiple hours. So, it's gonna go from like $50 to probably...
I thought we...
It might triple on them, is all I'm saying.
I believe that fee has always been waived.
I'm just only bringing that up 'cause it is a feeder program.
Youth Basketball League.
It's the only reason I bring that up.
They paid the custodial fees for the weekends. But we've never paid the, or the youth league basketball, we've never paid a user fee.
We have a request in your packet from them tonight, oddly, coincidentally, but it's for a different, it's for a basketball camp. And they were in Group 2.
Which will run all day.
Which was, yep, which was, 'cause there's a custodian on duty, so there was no charge for that. But it was 80, the total was $80. $20 per day for four days. That's underneath our current fee structure, I believe, right? Group 2 gym, yep. So, underneath this fee structure, that would go to the first, to your, to your point of clarity that you were asking about, Tara, right? So, that would be $30 for the first three hours. And then, it would be, it looks like $15 for every hour after that.
Okay.
So, that would be a change from $20.
Okay.
From $20 for the day to $30 for three hours.
That's big as a...
It's gonna go to 60.
It would go, yeah, from nine to two.
How many days do they use it, though? They use it Saturday and...
This request is for four days. I'm just using this 'cause it's one we have currently.
Sorry, I'm doing this all in my head right now.
That's all right.
Yes.
So, that, if you...
Saturday.
15, 16, let's see. 30, and then another 30, 60 for the day.
This is our turn.
On this.
So, that 30 is for, not per hour, it's for three hours?
It's for three hours, right? Am I understanding that right, Joe? It's $30 for the three hours, right?
Yes, $30 for three hours, and then they would have, looks like they're doing it for five hours, right?
Yep, and then it'd be another $30.
Additional $30, so it'd be $60 a day for that.
For the day instead of 20. Yeah. So, that would change.
I'm sorry, I was just doing the math.
180 versus 60.
So, do you wanna approve these facilities requests before we change?
Not just Saturdays, it's used seven days a week.
Oh, yeah, I was just doing the example that was in the packet.
Yeah, that's why I was saying that.
Going off of this.
Yeah.
'Cause they wouldn't have a custodial charge here.
'Cause they run practices through the youth and the travel programs. They use our gyms for that, too. So, it's pretty much they, seven days a week through their season. That's all I was saying, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So, I'm just wondering, might, so we have three groups here? Maybe we wanna leave three groups, I'm not sure, but maybe we wanna add something else. So, maybe, maybe we wanna have a different, you know, Group 1 is all the school-affiliated, Group 2 is the town, I'm making this up, like, the town-affiliated, yeah, civic. And Group 3 might be something else.
I guess that's where it was going, was, is there a possibility to kind of rearrange the groups, only 'cause that is a feeder program to...
Yeah, the, the league tries to keep the fees low.
And they try to keep...
Compared to all the towns, you know, they've been able to do that. And they offer a lot of free spots, you know, to, if any families are struggling, you know.
Could we group the town groups under student extracurricular organizations? Or the athletic booster?
Might apply to other groups as well.
At this point, we're not changing the policy, so we'd have to vote to change the policy before we change the fee structure, if we're gonna group them in with something.
Yeah, the policy will have to be changed, yep.
Could also look at a rate that is for longer-term use, as opposed to daily. Maybe there's some kind of rate structure we can do with that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, kinda see what an organization like that has paid for an entire season before and kinda work something around that.
So, we don't have to change the policy if we're just voting on the rates? Is that correct?
I would think so.
If we're, yeah, if we're leaving all the language exactly the same and we're just changing the numbers, I think it's fine to just vote the rates. But if we wanna move...
So, we have some programs going this summer, and so, the concern is, you know, not to hit these, these groups, so...
This could go back to the policy subcommittee, if you want.
Or we could vote that this takes place as of September 1st, gives notice, or give it a, so that, so that it gives people the opportunity to see that, you know, these organizations, that the rate's going up. And so, it doesn't affect the people that have planned on doing it this summer.
When was the last time we raised rates?
1948.
We haven't touched them since I've been here.
I guess my point was...
Been here for seven years, and we haven't touched them.
My point is, like, a rehearsal, I get it. But when you have a league that is using the facilities seven days a week through a full season, that's a different hit than a one-day rehearsal, I guess is what I was gathering at.
Yeah, I think it's just revisiting what the pricing is for Group 2, 'cause Group 2 explains Group 2.
Yeah, exactly.
It is that group of kids. So, maybe we just have to look at a different structure, rates for that group.
'Cause they are Blackstone, Millville kids.
Okay.
Because you could almost argue that some of those same organizations, that, I mean, if Group 3 is all of their community, such as sports camps, when we have a basketball camp for a week, someone could argue that they could fall into Group 3, which would even be more costly for them. So, maybe we need to tighten some of that language up, too.
Play devil's advocate, they are, this seems like, not this organization, great organization, but if this is the example we're using, they are using the facilities a lot. So, they may be privy to a fee increase or rate increase at some point. So, it's kind of a hard truth to accept, but they, we should, you know, maybe not all at once, but maybe there's like a step up since they, it seems like they're the ones that use, are gonna be affected the most. I'd hate to see them, you know, negatively affected in a major way and see any sort of drop-off from their, you know, the people that play those sports. Maybe we do bring it back to committee? Or have us see the policy subcommittee and then bring it back to you guys.
So, we can pass over this till the August 19th meeting? If we can continue this, is that fine?
Yeah, I'm happy to, if that's what the group wants, committee wants to do, I'm happy to revisit it with the policy, visit with the policy subcommittee.
We have to vote on that, or just...
Well, we'll take a vote just to continue it.
Is there any way to see what they did pay for their entire season? Are you the one who said it, Carrie?
Yeah.
Just to see what the difference will be?
Yep.
Okay.
We, my recollection is that we always paid, the fee was for the custodians. You know, we paid that fee, or they, I was part of it. For, I'm not, I am on the board, but I, I don't know if I can even vote on that, if we had to vote.
I don't think I can either.
Maybe we can look to add in the fee schedule, like a season...
That's what I was gonna suggest, is season fee.
I'll give a...
And just, it would just be like a...
Yeah, a one-time.
One-time cost and...
A season pass.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to have the policy subcommittee visit this and bring it back to the school committee.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll give it to you, Carrie. Just so there's no conflict. Alrighty, we'll move on to...
We put athletic fees in there, too, or just the...
Did you wanna look at the...
These or that? Athletics fees.
The athletic piece is just there for your, we're not proposing any changes on that.
Okay.
It's just there for your, to see where we stand.
We did Douglas, Northbridge, Hope Dale, and Bellingham. It just shows kind of where we are in comparison to the systems, some of the systems around us.
I have a question about that. I know we have one sport that's listed at $100. And I'm curious, though, if we're not changing any of the fees, why one sport, I know the 325 is football, and they're always a more increased price, but I guess I'm wondering why one sport is $100 when I know they have transportation, they have uniforms, they have choreographers.
And that's not cross-country? Which is like the least, you know, cross-country is 200.
I thought, again, these were, these have been set for, for years and years. I thought it had something to do with, initially, was Cheer maybe a club? I think, I think it was initially a club.
Getting it going.
I think so, yeah. And I don't think that that had ever been changed since then. I could try to find the history on that.
Yeah, I think I...
I think that's how that happened.
I think I would like to see all of the sports equaled out. Which I know football and hockey are always a different beast, but...
I agree with you.
So, do we wanna revisit this one as well? And...
With a list of each sport, what is charged?
Okay.
And with that being said, then, is, if we say we change these fees in August, what sport is gonna be directly, what's following, like, right after that? That we'll have to give notice.
The signups have already begun the fall sport.
I was just gonna say, if signups have already opened, that's going to be a problem.
Okay. Well, we can also set a date on the fees.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
We've built the, as the committee knows, the FY25 budget around the fee structure that's here. So, the committee might decide to, to, you know, punt on that and set it up for FY26.
Which gives plenty of notice.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's something to think about.
Okay, so, we already passed over, we took a, we took a second to pass over this agenda, so we'll revisit it next, next month?
Perfect.
Okay, report of the superintendent, summer programming update.
Yes, thank you again. I'm gonna ask Mary Colanino, our lead coach, to join us and share some highlights from today, actually. We launched our summer programming, with the exception, ESY goes tomorrow, and the 21st Century goes next Monday. Mary, thanks for being here.
Thank you. So, today, we started with summer school credit recovery and also the summer enrichment programs. So, for those two programs, right now, we have 130 kids that will be, be attending. We started with just two classes this, this week, with art and, art camp and sports camp. And then, next week, band will join as well. And we had, this year, we had 14 ELL students that came as well for a language acquisition program for them. And then, next week, we will start with, with our ESY program. And then, also, 21st Century at the complex will start in July. And then, the middle school, I mean, Millville will start, MES will start in July with, with those kids. So, they have about 30 students that, from grades 1 to 3, that will be in that program. 21st Century has about 80, and the ESY has about 60 kids. We're providing lunch and breakfast for the kids. And everything went really well today, so far, so good. Excellent.
We did, we put ACs in the classrooms, right?
We did, we put ACs in the classrooms. The teachers and the students were very thankful for that. And all of the, all of the, those classrooms that the teachers will be using at the complex have air conditioning as well.
Unfortunately, though, at the high school, the circuits keep breaking.
Yeah, they kept blowing.
Because of, they can't handle the load of the AC and the smart TVs. It's too much. So, Scott and his team have been very busy today.
They have, they were...
Running around, trying to figure out how to get things.
Probably about five or six times per classroom.
Yeah.
So, they were, yeah, so they were, they were really busy.
Comfortable and learning is a challenge right now, but...
But the kids were really, they were very well behaved, very patient. So, it was, it was good, no problems.
I think most teachers are opting for the AC right now?
I know, they actually had to make a choice today. AC or the Smart Board, and they all chose AC, so...
At least they're comfortable.
Which was fine. And, any questions?
I was at the track this morning, and the high school was definitely a busy place.
It was very busy.
There was a lot happening there, yeah.
Yeah, it was, all good, all good things.
The captains' practices have been awesome to see, too. I went over and talked to the girls that were at the complex this morning. We got, had received an email from the Blackstone Parks and Rec saying how professional our, our students were when they went to the board meeting a couple of weeks ago to ask for the usage of the fields. And she, you know, was just glowing about our soccer captains. So, I went down to speak with them this morning, and the kids were doing great. They were out there, I saw the field hockey up on the track, and then, the soccer was down at the complex. It was pretty cool to see. And the boys are actually there, I think, tonight or tomorrow night, to the Parks and Rec board meeting to request the field use as well. So, it's like good civic engagement, too, right? Like, to learn the process and how you stand in front of a board and a committee and get permission for things. So, the kids, they really did a nice job. It was awesome.
We have two ESL, ESL kids that are, are missing captains' practice this week for soccer, and they were not happy about it, but, but they came. So, they know, their parents know how important this is for them. So, they're, they're coming, they can start next week.
And there's some kids who have come up to fall sport practices because of the sports day that they had before the year ended.
Oh, that was wonderful.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Very busy.
Very busy.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Transportation routes for 24, 25.
Yes, Jill?
Yeah, so, a quick update. So, just a reminder to everyone in the community, we, remember, next year, we are having three bus runs. I know we said it over and over, given the times, but we do have the three runs. So, we have our kindergarten through 3rd, our 4th through 7th, and our 8th through 12th. We've been working really closely with Tellstones to get them all the information they need as early as possible. They already have it. So, we can get out the bus routes well before, 'cause I know in the past, you know, it's kind of toward, edging toward the beginning of school. So, our goal right now, as I work through this, is to be able to have it out in the community. Again, it's a goal, we're hoping to reach August 8th, to be able to get those out nice and early, so parents can make arrangements. They'll have all that, you know, sooner than later, to help support our transition to our new three-building model. So, we're working on that. And if I do have any updates at our next committee meeting, I'll let you know. But that's our goal right now, is for the 8th.
Do we know what time, like, the middle school always opens a little bit early for like that drop-off? Do we have those times, or can we get those as well?
I can get them.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'm sure the high school will be the same, sorry.
All right, thank you for the update on that. Title and audit review.
And that is me again. So, in your packet, this has been the year, the last two years, the years of the hour, our tiered focus monitoring. I think this is, I don't know, the third one presenting? We also were asked to complete a tiered focus monitoring for our title grants. And titles are federal grant monies that we get. And they came in and they looked at all of our programs, our procedures, you know, the grants that we manage, how we're spending those monies. If you look at the second page, theirs has done a little different. They took a look at all the criteria that they're looking at. If there are any findings, meaning that we have to correct something, you will see something in the first column, which you'll notice there is nothing in that column. The next one is requirement filled, means they met, we met all of the requirements for the procedures, the policies, all of our documentation. And you'll notice there that we fulfilled all of our requirements, and we have no action required for any of those. I think we had talked about in your next kind of update, but I'm gonna send you some real specifics about the title grants and what they're all about, but just an overview. Our Title 1 right now, again, they're all federal, and these really help strengthen our core programs and support students who need some intervention, our evidence-based programs, so we can elevate the quality of our instruction. Our Title 2, this has to do a lot with excellence in teaching and learning. So, we do make sure, you know, we have teacher mentors that are working out of this title. We're also looking at prove the quality and effectiveness not only of our staff, but our principals, through some professional development. And then the last title that we get is our Title IV. And what Title IV is, it's to build the capacity to ensure all students have access to quality programming. This to us right now, we use this to kind of hit the whole child. You'll see in our Title I, it's more curriculum instruction in our blueprint. And our Title II, it's the curriculum instruction as well. And when it hits the Title IV, that's, actually in Title I, it's also the community. But in Title IV, it's really that social emotion, that whole child piece. So that's when we write our grants, what we get for. And I'll send it to you more in detail, but just wanted to give you a quick overview. So this was our final one for, I hate to say final one, but our larger audits, our tiered focus monitoring over the last two years. And we did well with that one bulk appliance.
Any follow-up questions? Looks like we got an A+ on the report card. All right, we'll move on to the business office, the personnel report. Joe?
Did you have personnel updates?
I just have a quick, yeah, just a quick update with our vacancies. We have a few openings still. We received a resignation from our school psychologist at the high school, but we have a finalist for that position already, which is great. So we'll be meeting with that candidate tomorrow. We have a finalist for a math interventionist position that will be for this building, actually. The grades four through seven. We have two special education vacancies. One just became vacant. We had it already filled and then the candidate stopped responding. So that's unfortunate, but, so we are moving on and reposting that position. And then we have a teen chair for Millville Elementary School that we just posted. So those are the Unit A, you know, classroom teacher type positions that we have vacant and where we stand with each one of those. So we're actually in very good shape. We do have, at the para-professional level, we have one middle school para, one high school para. And then we have two for Millville Elementary. So we're still screening resumes and doing interviews for those. And then just today, we had our three interviews for our district accountant position, which, so that search is going very well. We hope, hopefully by the next meeting, we'll be introducing you to somebody. But we're through round one of interviews today and we'll be doing this, a follow-up round later this week. So doing well. And when we receive a resignation, we have an exit survey. So we have sent our exit survey to everybody that has resigned or anybody who has resigned after June 1st. Three people have responded and the responses as to why they're moving on to other opportunities. One was looking for less rigorous instruction at the kindergarten level and wanted more playtime. So, you know, she was looking for a school system where they did more play and less of the teaching and learning. We had a candidate that was looking for a different career choice altogether. And then we had a candidate who was looking, staying in education, but actually wants to teach beyond the grade levels where he is and is not interested in working with preschoolers. And next year would have preschool, a couple of preschool sections and did not want to do that. So I just shared those things, that these are the things that, you know, this is what we're, we're trying to get information back from folks if there's a problem. The candidate, the individual who left to go to a district that did less instruction at the kindergarten level, I did ask if, she indicated she would be interested in a follow-up interview. I tried to reach out and schedule something and she said she's booked all July and August. So she was no longer interested in having that conversation with me. But we do have a spot in the survey that we ask, if, you know, if you were open to a follow-up with me, I'd love to do that. And then the other two indicated that they wouldn't be. Their, their responses were very different and it was pretty clear, you know? So we're trying to get to the root of, you know, what's, what's happening. So I just wanted to get a quick update on that.
Okay, thank you. Next is the FY 2024 closeout.
That's me. So the first piece of the close I'd like to go through is my projection for FY 24. The report that you have tonight is as of June 25th. So this projects to the end of the year. You'll see that there's, the biggest change on this report is one thing we were able to do is move some of the expenses for out-of-district tuition out of Circuit Breaker, the Circuit Breaker Fund into the general fund, giving us a balance that we can carry forward and use next year for any unanticipated costs. You'll see at this report that we are expected to meet the school committee's expectations at the year end. Unless there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer. If there are, I can move on to the actual closeout. The next sheet does show the summary of the closeout and the request, we're gonna have to move funds from one category to the next. I did want to point out that the summary sheet is a net of the activity of the postings I'd like to do to cover deficit accounts with surplus money from other accounts. So it's a net effect. There's multiple entries, over 60 entries that I'd like to do. And that's what's behind that document to support what I'm requesting. If you want to see the actual ins and outs of each account line, that's there. And that's what I'll be posting if approved. You'll see that we're looking to move $130,000. Well, there's motions on each one of these that you'll be going through. But you'll see that we're looking to move funds from each one of these general fund categories into the other to, to cover these deficit lines. One other-ish piece I wanted to point out is I did put a little projection together for the Circuit Breaker Fund and the Transportation Fund. With moving the expenses out that we could from Circuit Breaker into the General Fund, we're gonna be carrying over just under $155,000 in that fund for use for next year. And then the Transportation Fund, we're gonna be carrying over about $117,000 for use for next year. So we're in a good place. Our goal with Circuit Breaker and Transportation, if we can, over the next maybe one or two fiscal years, is to get that up to the fully funded amount that we're gonna get in the next fiscal year so we can budget and know that that's exactly what we'll have and always have the balance of the next funded amounts in reserve for any of those unanticipated or extraordinary costs that come up. It'll be a process. It can't happen all at once, but over time it'll happen. And I don't know if you need me to go through anything else or if we want to go through each one of the motions that'll go into the details of what we're requesting to be moved from one, one fund, one category to the next.
Oh, yep. Any, any questions before we get into the motions? Joe, no? Want to fire away or?
No.
Someone want to stop the motion?
I can. Make a motion to move $116,320 from instructional to administration. Should I read all through it?
We'll do individual motions. Is that easier, individual?
Yeah, individual.
All right, motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Make a motion to move $13,766 from instructional to fixed assets.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
A motion to move $107,000 from other student services to out-of-district tuition.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to move $29,000 from benefits to out-of-district tuitions.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next is to accept the Fuel Up grant in the amount of $2,000 for new cafeteria equipment. And-
That is, yes, in, in your packet, there's a little overview from our food service director. That was a grant that the food service director and her team wrote that will purchase smoothie machines for the kids and the teachers, so.
I'll just read this real quick. Dear school committee members, the nutrition services department was awarded a grant for a smoothie maker for the high school. The equipment valued at $2,000 will be shipped to the high school in August or September. The grant was sponsored by Fuel Up, a program that helps provide access to good nutrition and overall wellness in school communities. We are excited to be able to offer the new healthy choice for our students next year. And it's from Jen Paradas.
Yes.
And what is the pleasure of the board?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the $2,000 for the grant for the smoothie maker.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second and by Chuck. Any further discussion? Is that for the school committee members as well?
I'm almost in the, I'm almost out there already.
Chuck, Ted, come back in to the room.
I'm gonna be behind this pillar before it's all said and done.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Well, they put it in.
Surplus requests.
Yes, so we have two requests. One is quite significant. It's the clean-out, if you will, of the materials at the Hartnett School. You have a list in your packet that outlines all of the text, the copyright date and the numbers of copies that we have in each. And so a lot of, as you can see, a lot of work went into getting all of these materials in one place and inventorying everything. And we are working with Bates, Bay State Books and another textbook company to come on in and take a look at everything to see if there's anything, you know, that they would like to purchase. They probably won't purchase the 1972 Voices Literature Language and Composition 43 books, but you can see that it was, this, this clean-out was, was well overdue, so.
Well, they may not purchase them, but I think we can put those up with the old jersey.
Maybe we make them take a book with the jersey.
You might have some alumni opening up that front cover to see if their name is still in there.
That's right. Whatever else was written in there. Okay, so-
That, and then there was, again, from food service, to surplus and dispose of some equipment. Two pieces that were from 1992 and one that was purchased in 1972, a mixer.
That mixer might be worth something.
That no longer works. I'm sensing a theme to this evening.
Yes, yes. Retro. So this, we will do two different motions. And so I'll take a motion to approve the surplus request for the books at the middle school.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Carrie. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Also take a motion to approve the surplus request for the kitchen equipment from the food service department.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Okay, that takes care of that part of the agenda. Moving on to a facilities report, facilities update. Mr. Facilities Operator.
In that old book collection, I did find a book from my wife's when she was class of 86.
That's awesome.
That was interesting. And some of them went as far back as 82 that I picked up, so. It's unbelievable. Okay, the front stairs at the high school, to the left side, concrete has been stripped of, the old concrete that was deteriorating. The mason did finish the job on July 3rd at 2:30 in the morning. Joe and I verified this on the cameras. Now, the reason for that was because of the cooler temperatures and the sun would dry out the water extra faster. So he wanted to do it late at night, covered it with tops to keep the moisture in. So it was a job well done. Issues with the gym floor at the high school, there was moisture getting under it and it's starting to curl up in a pretty large area, probably a 10 by 10 area. I did call in a roofing expert and we scurried the area pretty thoroughly and found that it's coming from a drain from the roof. Only happens during heavy rainstorms. I did have a plumber come out today and look at it as well. My thinking is that that pipe may be clogged under the ground somewhere. So once that water builds up high enough, it has no other place to go. We did find a large crack on the backside of the pipe as well. Now, to me, the crack wouldn't really leak if the water was flowing down, but if it's building up, it's gonna be a place to go. So we won't know that until he cuts the pipe out and we investigate further. We'll run some water down it and see if it backs up. I also want to cut out a section of the gym floor underneath the bleachers to make sure that it is drying up after we do this. And then I'll have, get quotes to repair the floor. Unfortunately, it's not gonna match perfectly, but it won't be a dripping hazard. As it stands now, if we pull the bleachers all the way out, it's not on the basketball court. So that's a, that's a plus. So we will get quotes to have it fixed both ways, either sand it down or replace what's, what's really bad. And here at the middle school, the LED lighting project has begun. They started that on June 27th and they're moving right along. You can see all the lights in the lobby have been done, the cafeteria been done, locker rooms, the stage, which is nice. And they'll continue on the first and second floor. The third floor will be done in phase two, along with the outdoor lighting. And that's providing we get another grant next year. The deadline for applying for that grant is October. So we'll work on that with the town. The backflow preventer from the last meeting, the update on that is it has been repaired, no longer dripping, so that's good. Storm drain outside of the cafeteria window, there's a small hole developing around it, a sinkhole, if you will. I did get our brand paving to come out and look at that. And he's providing us with a quote and that work will be done by the end of July. It's a relatively easy fix, he says. JFK, the movement of the grades have been completed. However, due to the summer programs, the internal classrooms have not been moved yet, like moving one teacher from one part of the building to the other, until those rooms are no longer being used and can get cleaned out as quickly as possible and move all the teacher supplies back in. Millville Elementary School, the only update I have on that is McClure Engineering did come out and they changed the old chemical pumps on the filtration system. The newer pumps are designed to alternate with one another and take over show one pump fail. That's the way it was explained to me. So that was done two weeks ago. And like I said, RA movers came in, they completed the move even in that brutal heating that we had. We provided them with lots of ice water, freeze pops, so kept them happy. And they, they plugged right away and got it done within five days. It was definitely impressive. Yeah, highly recommended. And that is all I have. Questions, concerns? Girls' field hockey did start today and I explained to Carrie that. We will get the nets up there and the grass mowed as short as possible. We don't want to cut it too short right away with this heat. We do have irrigation, but I don't want to risk damaging the grassroots, so. Little bit at a time, we'll get it down there and we'll be good to go. I mean, it's playable now, like, obviously.
Absolutely.
That grass with the irrigation system and the fertilization, we gotta mow it two to three times a week. If we don't, then we gotta bag it, which takes twice as long.
Looks good right now out there. I was telling Scott this morning. Nice green field up there.
Everybody's impressed with the football field.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a use of facilities request, as we discussed earlier.
Yes, just one in your packet from the Blackstone Millville Youth Basketball Summer Camp. They're looking to do a summer camp.
To approve their camp at the fees as on the form that they completed.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I'm not voting on that.
And Chuck has abstained, let the record reflect. Okay, school committee forum. Would anybody like to add anything? Everybody good? Good. I like it. Move this right along. I would like to thank the town administrator, Peter Caruso from Millville, for coming in and giving us an update and glad to see they're moving forward. And say hi to Millville BVT rep, Mr. Finn in the crowd while he's sitting. I didn't want to leave you alone, leave you out of it. Okay, so our next meeting, school committee meeting is August 19th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. We will be going into executive session for the purposes of MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A3 to conduct strategy. to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body and the chair so declares, so not to return until open session. I will take a roll call on to go to, on to open, sorry, executive session. Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All righty. Thank you very much.